What the real cloud.
This time I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. The, just a procedural item, we obviously are down because, one member because of the vacancy, we also have two other members who are absent. So for purposes of a quorum, we do have a quorum of the council that is present. The simple motions can be passed with the majority of those present. If it is an ordinance or a resolution, it does require a quorum of the full council. So that means four votes for resolutions or ordinance, as otherwise three is sufficient. Okay. Once again, we have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be consider approval of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on March 8th. The council does have the minutes. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
Move approval.
Motion by Craig is our second.
Second.
Second by Russ to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We will move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda item number two is a public hearing on the ordinance that would amend Chapter 62 of the city ordinance establishing access management for, or the driveway ordinances. So we'll have a public hearing. I'll call on Director of Public Works, City Engineer Jason Anderson, to conduct the public hearing. Following the conclusion of the public hearing, we will consider the adoption of the ordinance. With that, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. So city staff is proposing this ordinance to establish a set of driveway regulations that would more explicitly describe the requirements and impose a few limitations for driveways in various areas in the community based on zoning and use. So major purpose for this is to help just ensure some continuity in what we're allowing. It describes things such as driveway width when located within the right-of-way we're talking about, not on private property, but the portion of the driveway in the, in the right-of-way. So there'd be a limitation on width, spacing between driveways, and driveway location near intersections, things of that nature. This size, this item was presented to the PIT Committee of the council at their January 25th meeting. There was a recommendation to approve, recommendation to the council to approve. We also brought it to the LNO Committee at their March 1st meeting. We have that same recommendation, but council member Lizinski did suggest that we consider altering some of the language of the ordinance to allow different construction materials. The ordinance does require a concrete driveway apron in the right-of-way, and Councilman Lizinski suggested that we allow bituminous as well. So I think we would be interested in some discussion on that. But beyond that, I think I can answer any questions if there are any.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Will open up for any questions or input as part of the public hearing? Does a member of the audience that has anything to say as part of this public hearing? Or the council? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to close the public hearing discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll now consider the ordinance. Are there questions about the ordinance?
Jason, just a clarification. Did you say we'd allow bituminous on the city right-of-way?
That was the suggestion of council member Lizinski. Staff's proposal is concrete only in the right-of-way.
And I would be in approval of the concrete in the right-of-way. I just don't approve asphalt in the right-of-way. So I think if we need to change that as far part of this motion, that we allow bituminous in the driveway, but concrete in the city right-of-way.
Right. So this ordinance would only be referring to the area in the city right-of-way? If there's no desire of the council to suggest an alternative material, we have it written for concrete, so I would, I think the motion can be just to approve the ordinance.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion on the ordinance.
So moved.
Motion by Russ, is there a second? Seconded by Craig, discussion?
I just, I kind of agree with council member Lizinski on the bituminous. I don't, I don't understand what the difference is and why the concrete versus the bituminous, I guess. I don't know what the advantages are, and the roads are all bituminous. So why?
I think if it's the desire of the council to allow both materials, we would be open to that. I think you'll have very few people that, that go that route, because I don't think it's very cost-effective when comparing the lifespan and the cost of installation in such a small area. I think that concrete makes the most sense. The one requirement we would have is that sidewalks must be concrete through the driveway area, so you'll be putting blacktop on both sides of the concrete sidewalk. That, I think that kind of makes it a little more difficult, because when you're trying to pave blacktop in that small of an area, it gets to be a lot of effort, and you don't end up with maybe as good of a final product. It's not as uniform.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass.
Is this amending an ordinance?
Is amending an ordinance? So it does require four votes.
Correct, it does not pass.
So that motion does not pass. So the alternative would be let the motion stand without passing, or move to reconsider and refer to a future meeting.
Move to reconsider and move to a future meeting is what I would propose.
Send a motion?
Yep.
Motion by, motion by Steve, seconded by Craig, discussion? And city clerk and city attorney, that type of a motion is allowable?
Yes.
Okay. Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And that motion does pass.
And I think Kyle, it's my recollection of Robert's rules. We have to, the next time the council convenes was when we'd have to read, address this matter next meeting.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, the only other way would have been to leave it, and then the descending vote could recall it at a future meeting and reconsider also, correct?
That, that would have worked also.
Yeah. Okay, correct.
Okay. So we'll move then to the next agenda, which is the consent item. We'll bring the agenda items up on the consent agenda, and they include consider the approval of sponsorship renewals for the Red Baron Arena and Expo, consider the approval of the 2022-2023 annual refuse haulers licenses from the wastewater treatment facilities improvement project, we have a payment invoice to Bolton and Mink, consider the approval of the permit for alcohol beverages at city-owned facilities, consider the approval of amendments to the personnel policy manual, consider the approval of the resolution authorizing the submission of the DNR outdoor recreation grant, and consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
Number seven and eight, please.
Seven and eight. Any other item? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Steve, seconded by Russ, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda item number seven, the amendments to the personnel policy manual, Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of clarifications, maybe from either Sheila or the Personnel Committee. 4.1, second sentence of the job evaluation system used by the city, is the called? Eliminate the word "the."
I can eliminate the word "the."
Couple of lines down, it says determining the relative importance and value of different jobs, should it be plural or singular?
The word "jobs?"
Yes.
To me, that should be plural.
Okay. 4.3, very last paragraph. Assignment of job titles, establishment of minimum qualifications, and the maintenance of job descriptions and related records is a responsibility of the city administrator. Should that be the HR director? 4.3, way on the bottom.
I see where you are.
You mean what? The city administrator, does she?
She reviews all job descriptions if they're amended.
But does she do maintenance of the job descriptions?
I maintain them, she has approval authority over them.
That's what it's saying, it says, and the maintenance of job descriptions is the city administrator. Should be the human, human resources director, correct? I mean, even though the city administrator approves them, the maintenance should be done by the HR director.
I can make that change.
Okay. 4.4, just, I'd like to hear input from either personnel or, why we're taking out the number of steps? I mean, we're eliminating six, and why don't we leave step, you know, step 10? Just curious. With the new policy, with the new, we have 10 steps.
Right.
So in this paragraph, point, 4.4, it says in the middle, well, it says a couple of different times, a six-step wage progression of rate, and that's being stricken, but a couple of lines down, it says up to a maximum rate of pay, parentheses, step six. Should that be left in there, step 10?
Should be step 10.
I can reinsert those.
Should be step 10.
Okay.
It was simply a proposal that was brought to the Personnel Committee, and that actually didn't have any discussion at the meeting.
Okay.
So if the council wishes, I can add step 10 back into the language.
And that's also on 4.6?
It would be step J, not step 10.
Yeah, or step, whatever it is, sorry. For, the, the next one, the very last page, 4.6, I think you're referring it to step six again, Sheila. So whether paragraph starts, employees may be eligible. So just a couple cleanup things is all.
If, if the council wishes, I can make those changes.
And Sheila, there was, this is just, it was an oversight, right? It's, there was no reason to leave it at step six?
No. Yeah.
No, the, the schedule's changed, so we no longer have the six-step range, now it's steps A through J.
Right, okay.
Right.
So we put step J instead of step six, yeah.
Got it.
Well, step six is crossed out in 4.6.
Correct.
Right.
But, and the only reason I said, you want to leave it in there. Step, you're, you're suggesting taking it out, but you want to leave step J in there.
Maximum rate, the maximum rate, which is equivalent to step J.
Right. We can reference it, that's fine.
The bigger thing was that maintenance of the job descriptions, and I thought that should be the HR director. With those changes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Russ is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Steve, discussion? Not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number eight, the resolution authorizing the submission of the DNR outdoor recreation grant, once again, Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I apologize because I wasn't at the last meeting, but I didn't see in the minutes, and it says a city match would be 50% of the project cost, $60,000. But the grant award, that match can consist of cash or the value of materials, labor, or equipment usage. So just a clarification, that, that may not be cash. It could be in the, in the lieu of labor and equipment usage by our parking next step.
And it most likely, and it most likely won't be cash is the presentation.
I didn't see it in the minutes, and I bring it up just so the public is aware that it may not be, could be cash, but may not be cash.
And that was part of the presentation that Preston had made.
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Russ, is there a second?
I'll second it.
By Craig, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And motion passes. Okay. Agenda item number 10 is the comprehensive plan update by SRF. I'll first introduce Lauren Deitz, and who will introduce the consultant who has been assisting us with the comprehensive plan update. Lauren?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff began working with SRF Consulting in the spring of 2021 on our update to the city's comprehensive plan. So that process began with a review of our current plan and all other related studies and reports that we've had in probably the last five years or so were submitted. The consultants were also onsite in September to meet with staff and do a community tour. From there, they moved into a community survey and focus groups, of which we had 604 responses on our survey and 58 respondents in our focus groups. So tonight, Stephanie will walk through some of those preliminary results of our surveys, and then talk through next steps in the process, just so council is aware of where we're at. I don't think that there'll be any, this is kind of just a broad overview of key themes. We aren't moving into the goals section at this point, but it'll at least give you a good understanding of what direction we're moving. So with us tonight is Stephanie Valkers. She is our lead consultant on the project, and she'll be joining us virtually.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren. Am I able to share my screen with everyone? Okay, perfect. Okay, so thank you, council, for this opportunity to gather with you tonight and give you an update on where we're at with the comprehensive plan. Lauren did a great job of giving an overview of the process overall, but really wanted to highlight the key activities that we have been working on over the last couple of months here, which really focused on engaging the community, both the public and stakeholders, to understand issues and opportunities that this comprehensive plan will tackle. So we had really three components of that, which was our community survey, our open house, and our focus groups. And again, through this phase of the process, really, the open house and community survey, we're really geared at understanding what are people's experiences in Marshall today, and what are they thinking about in the future, so that we can understand the issues and opportunities that this plan can tackle. The focus groups were also a great opportunity for us to dive a little deeper into conversation on five key topics, and I'll talk about that here in a slide or two as we move through. But just as an overview, as Lauren mentioned, we had 604 responses to the online survey. We did provide, had paper copies of the survey available as well, but most people participated through the online Survey Monkey. So really great response in terms of that 600 people. There were a lot of questions that people could engage and participate in that hit on all of the required, or the, the five elements that we're talking about within the comprehensive plan. So again, getting in and understanding what those issues and opportunities are. What do they want out of economic development? Where do they see growth potential in the community? Things of that nature. We did ask some demographic questions as part of the survey as well, and those were optional questions, so people were not required to respond to them. But from those that did respond, we did hear from mostly 30 to 49-year-olds out of the community, but we did hear from all age groups. So we had people under the age of 18 that responded to the survey, but also people over the age of 70. So a good cross-section of the community there. We did also hear from majority of long-term residents, really keying in on those that have been a member of the community for over 20 years, but again, did hit on a cross-section. So those demographic questions hit on age and income level, on race and tenure within the community. The other great part about just understanding who responded to the survey is that we can also look at the specific results per those, those groups, for those that did respond. And so within the survey summary, we do get into some of those specific questions where the overall majority of survey respondents may have identified the need for outdoor recreation as the, the primary topic, you know, primary need for one of our plan elements. But a certain age group or certain income level may have identified something else as a higher priority, so it helps us dig into those results a little deeper as well. Also, the open house was really intended to go along with that community survey. We had a small group, but a good, good conversation with the open house. We had, we were open from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM with two presentations throughout that time, but had a lot of great conversations, some good ideas shared, and gathered input across all of the plan elements. So some great kind of input that was gathered together there. And we did hold focus groups at the same time as our open house, that same week. And really, the intent of our focus groups was to build on the engagement that we were hearing through the survey and open house, to have some deeper conversations to kind of truth some of what we were hearing in terms of the experiences from the survey results. So we did have five focus groups that focused on topic areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion, housing, young professionals, SMSU, and businesses. So those were some kind of key topics or themes that were emerging from survey results, and that's why they were identified as focus group topics for us to dive into. And as Lauren mentioned, we had 58 participants that were a part of one of those focus groups, and had over 450 minutes of idea sharing. So some really great conversations that allowed us to dive a little bit deeper about some of the needs and issues that we were hearing across these five topics. And the results of all of this engagement were reviewed with our task force at the last meeting, and really helped us to under, to start to think about what these issues and opportunities are within the community, and what that's going to mean for goals for us moving forward into the comprehensive plan. So of course, the goals, for especially those of you on council, are really important as they are the tool that you can use to make decisions on moving forward, as you look back to use the comprehensive plan. So again, those establish our desired outcome or outlook for decisions to be made upon. But before we dive into solidifying what those goals are, our process is to first think about what those key themes are, what emerged out of the, the public input that in terms of themes or directions that the plan needs to respond to, or the analysis needs to be built from. So that was really the focus of our, our last discussion with the task force, and what we've been working on with staff, is focusing first on what these key themes are, what were those hot topics that emerged, so that we can then build our goals across those key themes. So this is maybe a little hard to read on, on screen here, and I can zoom in, I think, a little bit. But we did identify a variety of key themes that we think are, really highlight some of those key topical areas that emerged throughout the early engagement process. So I'll read through them here quickly, but in terms of, as I'm reading through them and how you think about them, they're meant to hit on all of the plan elements that we're, we're going to talk about within the comprehensive plan, and will be used to shape the goals and focus areas of our analysis and the next steps. And I'll get to that process as I, on my next slide here. But also wanted to call out that the, the orange text here is really meant to kind of draw attention to some of the key components of these key themes. So we start with maintain a warm, safe, and welcoming community for all, and promote pride in the community, support initiatives and active communication that promote inclusion and engage future leaders, maintain and build relationships and engagement opportunities that encourage action, support a variety of housing options that provides access to all, support growth and policies that support Marshall's sense of place, create flexibility into policies and regulations to meet the community's needs, invest in high, high-quality utilities, services, and resources, and support redevelopment opportunities, build sustainable and resilient infrastructure to support emerging trends and needs, and prepares the community for change, develop and attract a qualified and varied workforce to meet of the variety of businesses, explore opportunities to diversify retail and businesses, emphasize business expansion and retention by supporting and growing businesses, build partnerships and spaces to celebrate culture, art, and history, maintain and expand the park and trail system that includes year-round recreation opportunities, and advertise and promote available facilities and services to the community and collaborate on future needs. So I worked through those pretty quickly, and they are still kind of in a working format. But again, these are the, kind of the key topics that really wove through a lot of the different conversations that we were having throughout this early engagement process. And on the left side of this graphic, I think it's really important for us to recognize that though, you know, kind of in the middle part, there, you could sense that there were a lot of these key themes related to economic development, though they may be really teamed with economic, economic development, they are influenced by other components of the planning process as well. So then what does that mean for next steps for us? This is a really exciting time in the process, as we're going to get in and do some of the more nerdier planning work, diving in and doing some of that analysis. I know Ilya has really been itching for us to get into the review of the zoning ordinance. So from this point, we are, we have some draft goals and focus areas that we've been working on. Again, those are those key components that you, that will be really important to the, the plan, and really direct our goals for the community moving forward, that will lead us into our plan analysis and the definition of what recommendations and direction we want to be going, and then specifically those, the definition of implementation actions, what actions you need to be taking moving forward as the plan is completed. And did want to note that there will be, we do have one more open house identified in the planning process when we're getting more into these, the identification of recommendations and implementation actions, to make sure we share those ideas with the public and make sure we heard them all correctly. So I know that was pretty quick and brief, and I buzzed through a lot of things, but appreciate the time again, and would be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you, Stephanie, for that, that update. This was also updated to the Planning Commission, as well as the Plan Committee also. Feedback or input from the council? If not, thank you, and thank you, Lauren. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which would be agenda item number 11. Consider the authorization for staff to acquire proposals for YMCA financial feasibility and future recreation feasibility study. I'll, I'll call it first on city administrator Sharon Hanson to introduce this item.
Mr. Mayor and council, as you recall, in January of this year, we did put forth to the state legislature a request for sales tax revenue to be geared towards our aquatic center, but also for an indoor recreation facility. Since then, the sponsoring legislator, which Senator Dames felt that to really move that forward, it would be better to just focus on the aquatic center. And I believe that our representative is, is also feeling that way. So legislatively, it's not included in the proposal, but yet we still have this resolution and desire by the council to look at indoor recreation facility, and that was comments when we had that discussion back in January. So that's one reason to really look at moving forward with acquiring additional information. I think if we had that in hand at the end of January and, and promoted that to our senator and representative, we, we might have had more traction on including that in our legislation. Most other communities have looked at getting sales tax authorization for facilities, have data studies to back it up. We all know that in 2018, we had our aquatic center study. We're using really all of that data in there to talk about the need for our aquatic center today. So that's one item. The other item that, of course, we have on our agenda is the YMCA. Mid to late 2020, we had a presentation from YMCA and the executive director just on COVID impacts and their future viability. There's been some swings up and down since that time, with membership units going down, maybe some slight increases, but really the long-term stability of the Marshall area YMCA has been a concern for the YMCA board. At that particular time, the council did not have momentum in a certain direction following that presentation on, is this something the city needs to look further at? But since But since that time, especially in early 2022, maybe late 2021, the mayor has been approached by either members or board members of the YMCA, council member De Kramer has as well, and then, of course, I have as well been approached by either, you know, members of the YMCA or members of the board about the need for really the city to look at what a future partnership with the YMCA should look like. I did include in the packet some, some examples of cooperation within the state of Minnesota, but if you look nationally, the trend towards city YMCA cooperation is becoming greater. And this could be due to a variety of factors, which, you know, again, the Executive Director and the board has more knowledge on that. But I think it's challenging with just the, the different, different competing factors for time and the facilities aging, things like that. Let me also just say, and I'll, I'll end it here, I know that one of the board members, Eric Even, has some financial information and maybe others to present in YMCA. One of the things that the city of Marshall currently does not have, we don't have a master park plan. And for most comparable cities our size, it's something that we really should have. And whether it's talking about trail placement or different facilities, and maybe you sense this at times too, it's not maybe something that's put in a long-range plan. It's, it's an opportunity that arises as a result of maybe a street construction or other, other opportunities that present itself. But this is really something we should do on a long-term planning basis. And I know that, you know, Preston's not here tonight, but one of the things we're starting to see for, certainly for park and recreation projects is, we talk a lot about street funding and the cost of, of street construction, $5 million per mile. But park and recreation facilities are almost, almost becoming into that line of, you really got to start planning out financially how you're going to pay for it, the cost of, of facilities. I know today I talked to Preston just about bathroom facilities, and you guys have seen that as well. It's, it's so much more expensive to get funded just through a regular budget process. It really is a capital improvement planning process. So I'm not saying that this master park plan should be something that we take up tonight, but certainly we want to look at future facilities and their costs. And in addition, what does the future of recreation look like? Is it the traditional sports that Marshall does so well? We haven't really seen too much of a change from the, from the traditional sports because we're quite successful at it and got great participation. But how's that look 10 to 20 years from now? I think that's really important when we look at the YMCA's future and even our own park and recreation facilities as well. And I think that includes this indoor rec center, North Mankato and looking at, because they're looking at one right now. Does their facility meet the next 20 years? They did a facilities study, and I think I included one of them. They've done multiple ones, but I think the last one was like in 2019. You know, I'm not sure. So I'm going to pause here and just possibly turn over to YMCA to just comment a little bit further about where they're at currently and their thoughts on, on their future.
So if, I'll just, thank you, Sharon. I'll just add one item. The, we've had input from leadership at SMSU that they are also interested in, in indoor turf recreation. So the timing is right to do some joint planning, you know, how can we cooperate? How can we collaborate? And how can we not duplicate? So I think that's really the intent of some of the, of this discussion and, and perhaps some shared planning. With us tonight is Eric Even, the Treasurer of the YMCA Board, Steve Ressler, the Chair of the YMCA Board, as well as Tom Bowlen, the Executive Director. So Eric, are you the spokesperson this evening?
I get to be the spokesperson tonight. Thank you, Sharon, Mayor Burns, and council for letting us present here tonight. The biggest thing that I put in front of you is I just want to share kind of where the Y has gone through the COVID changes, what that's done to us financially as we look at what a possible partnership will look like. Obviously, we've got a long ways to go with it, with what a partnership truly looks like between shared services. A big one is facilities, which I'll talk about that a little bit here in a second as well. But if you look at the sheet in front of you, there are three full years' worth of data, 19, 20, and 21, 19 obviously being the last year. We were a full year of operation before COVID hit, and then 20 and 21 being two COVID years. The number just above the other income and expense line, that is our operational revenue. You can see even in 19 with where we're at, with almost 2,200 member units, we were still at about a positive $31,000 of operational revenue. COVID hits, and I've taken out all of the PPP money, the other government grants, and we did have a facility donation through to charitable remainder trust in 2020, which is also down below in that other income section. But just operationally, the YMCA lost $191,000 in 2020 from an operational standpoint with our loss in members. And then, you know, still trying to maintain operations, went through the second shutdown late 2020, and I think we hit as low as 1,400 member units when we were at a high of 22 before COVID hit. Bring in 2021, we started to see a little bit of that membership revenue start to come back, but even at the end of that year, we lost almost $160,000 again for the second straight year. So, and the government grants were not nearly as, as plentiful in 2021 to help sustain operations at that point. The 2022 column is what we are looking at currently through two months of operation. You know, we've seen, I think we just went over 1,800 membership units, so we're, we're working our way back up, but it is a very slow process, much slower than what we had hoped and anticipated going, coming out of the shutdowns. But you can see through two months of operations, we've already lost about $13,000 worth of operating revenue through two months of 2022. So the, one of the big reasons for us to look at this partnership and collaboration is, you know, we have a facility that our current operations are not allowing us to maintain that facility, and that facility is over 18 years old. Maintenance is there. We've got debt on our books right now because we had an rooftop air handling system above the pool that went out, didn't have an option to keep the pool open. We had to take on some debt to replace that unit. That was about an $800,000 unit up on the roof. So we are still able to maintain and service that debt, but obviously it is eating into those cash flows more and more all the time. And then as, you know, as far as our immediate needs for the facility, our pool is in dire need of some upkeep to a point where we need to resurface the entire pool, and it's about a $220,000 venture that right now we don't have the means to pay for. And so looking at that collaboration, that partnership is how can the city and the YMCA work together to maintain a facility, which we believe as a YMCA is very vital to the Marshall community, and help draw and keep community members here and utilizing the YMCA. So right now, like I said, the only option, the only item on the agenda tonight is to approve the staff moving forward with doing some studies on how this collaboration is going to work, but I wanted to present our financial condition so the council was aware of, of why we are again pursuing this collaboration with the city. And so questions from anybody at this time?
Thank you, Eric. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Eric, just, you know, one of the things, Sharon, refresh, you presented to us, Tom, I think in 2019, 2020?
I thought, I think it was mid to late 2020, if I recall.
You know, one of the things I heard after that presentation was, I'm going to be just brutally honest, was because Marshall sold it as a community center and it turned into a Y. That's why it's failing. Marshall sold it as a community center, and then we all know what happened. Shwans and everybody got it. It was a great, great thing, but it turned into a Y. So we have some, I don't know how much, maybe it's very, very little, but there's still some animosity out there that it's not a community center. And what's your definition of a community center versus a YMCA? I don't know what that is.
That would be my question back to you, Russ.
Yeah, I don't know what it is.
Is, is explain the difference to me because the YMCA is a community-focused organization. Whether we go into it without the branding of the YMCA or you have the branding of the YMCA, I don't see a difference in the two.
And Eric, I think, I agree with you. I look at a community center in some of our neighboring towns, Cottonwood, Woodlake, a community center is held by the, the city.
Yep.
The city owns them. They're used for various things, whether it's recreation, whether it's wedding receptions, whether it's graduation receptions, whatever the case be. I think that the Y, I'm not sure if it can do all those things.
But we do host graduation receptions. We do host birthday parties. I mean, we, we host all of that stuff where it is now, and I think that's why, Russ, you're starting to see more and more Ys as they're building new facilities. The city is involved in those, that even though the branding of the YMCA is involved in the operations, the city has much more ownership in the facility.
And Eric, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying, I look at those area communities and I look at Cassie Wees, because I sit on the CVB board. They've got more, we've got more weddings receptions scheduled out this year than we've ever had out at the Red Baron Arena. How many does Y have?
We don't have the space for a wedding reception.
Well, I don't, I probably disagree with you.
Depending on the size.
Yeah, depending on the size.
Right.
If you've got 500 people, maybe not. You had a wedding of 150, you probably could.
Yep.
So it's a marketability type of thing of what you want to do, how you want to do it, all that other type. And I'm just rambling here a little bit, but I think that the community center aspect is a lot different in people's eyes, a lot different than the Y.
Well, I think also the, you're kind of both saying the same thing. You know, the YMCA facility, while it does provide recreation and fitness opportunities, it's more than that. It really serves the, the community and all parts of the community. Much as what the original mayor's Blue Ribbon Task Force that looked at, what do we need, this was some 20 years ago, in the community to attract and retain families so that we have a workforce? That was the original purpose, and that was what was accomplished. And I think the YMCA organization has the, the programmatic expertise to provide not only the, the fitness and, but also some of those recreation things. The, what I hear you saying also is, what's your challenge in the future is your facility and the, the capital expenses that perhaps one of the things that was studied is that a more appropriate role for the city to be responsible for, while the YMCA would be responsible to continue the programming. That might be an outcome of this study.
Can I just add too, in a way, the, the YMCA supporting the study is, is somewhat taking a risk as well. The study could recommend a move away from the YMCA in terms of operation. That could be a conclusion.
Could be.
At the same time, you're still supporting, looking into this for the mere fact of the future viability of the facility for the community.
Correct.
Craig, and kind of looking back, because, you know, sitting on the Marsh or the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission and talking to the local athletic groups, MAB, Maha, the soccer, we're always looking for warm facilities in cold weather, and of course, there's always this piece of access and control. So having the partnerships is always good, but there's always the answer of question of timing and who has priority or prominence in using the facility. But unless we actually look at this and study it and what are those needs out there, and I'm hoping as we survey this, we put that together. Because that was part of the conversation when we originally talked about an indoor recreational facility when we were looking at, at going for the original request for the local option sales tax extension. We talked about doing those things. So I hope that this study includes that interface and look. And I know the Y is very aware of those other community organization needs and have been talking about the potential opportunity to do some of that partnering. So I guess that's my point on this, is I support us doing this. I think it's a good idea. I really wish we were a year ahead of the game because I think, you know, like you said, Sharon, we might have missed an opportunity now, but that doesn't mean we can't still do this. We just, we're going to have to figure it out. But I like the potential to do the partnering, and I think we have to take a good, honest, and earnest look at it to, to find out what's out there. Otherwise, we're speculating and not necessarily making good decisions.
I think that looking into the collaborative effort is a good thing. I like the community aspect. One of the things, I came here the year after the Y opened, and that was a huge selling point, you know? We got a brand-new YMCA, we got a brand-new, it's built and look at it, and it was really impressive. I use it as pretty much every day. I see kids there. I see, as a physician, it's a pillar of the health community. Could it be better? Yeah, sometimes I don't like the hours and I don't, it doesn't fit everybody's schedule. But we look at what the presentation just earlier on community needs and building indoor recreation facilities, we have one. We have a very good one. We just need to develop and go further. Recreation going into the future, I don't know what it's going to be. You know, that's one of the challenges of the Y. And then COVID was a, was a disruptor, and maybe innovative disruptor, where now you see the mirrors and the pelotons and things where people, but those are still costly. And the beauty of the Y is scholarship programs and things like that that allow access for everybody. And that's the beauty of our community is that we open it up to everybody. So I think going forward, I'm all for a study to see how it works. The one thing I was listening to you two talk and the difference, as I think, it's taxpayer money versus a nonprofit. You know, there's a lot of donations that come into YMCA. I don't know what the, if, I hope the study looks at what's going to be the downstream if we go into a city collaboration, because as a taxpayer, do I keep donating? I'm already donating with my taxes. In fact, my taxes may go up. In fact, they probably will go up. But how do you justify that then, and how do you mitigate? Do you have to raise the program cost? Do you have to, I mean, those are the things that the study needs to look at. So I'm all for the study.
Russ?
Mr. Mayor, and I want to echo what, what the mayor said and Councilman Shaver too, is I think if we're going to conduct this feasibility study, we have to make sure that all the partners are involved. I heard SMSU, but I haven't heard Marshall Public Schools. I think we've got great partnerships, the University of Marshall Public Schools, the city and the Marshall Public Schools of Recreation, everything else. I think we have to get all players to the table. I don't think we can exclude anybody. And in that, I think that's part of that total feasibility study. Because I can, I'm not going to pat myself on the back, but I think that I made a very strong push to have some type of indoor recreation facility for not only our youth, but for our residents to use during those cold winter months. So I just want to make sure that all the players are invited to the table for that
Any other input? If not, the, the recommendation is to authorize staff to acquire proposals that would then come back to this, this council to consider.
I move the recommendation.
I would second it.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Mr. Mayor, just one question. Who's going to pay for the feasibility study?
So the, Sharon, in your memo, you've outlined the proposal.
Well, I know I sent earlier an email about, there's really two questions. One is, what's our future cooperation with YMCA and what's the feasibility of that? And the other one is this indoor rec- And the other one is this indoor rec center. And I do agree, we need to be all-encompassing, public school and SMSU. I think that's very key, and I think it can be incorporated into one study. For the YMCA portion, we kind of mentioned maybe some cost share from YMCA, and I don't know if their board has discussed that at all. And we'd have to kind of see the cost break down as well. So I don't have a good answer for you on that. I think I'd like to see what some potential costs are and maybe go back to YMCA and see what that portion is and go from there.
Sharon, to be kind of clear on what the motion is actually approving, is it's approving to put out an RFP for the proposals. And we build the RFP to be as inclusive as we want, correct?
Correct. And I, you know, and I'll, I know Scott's here as well, and he could certainly comment. But for when we did recently the RFP for the selection of the engineer for the aquatic center, we did have a committee review the RFP before it was sent out and helped with the selection as well, and then made the full recommendation to the council.
Yeah, so my, I guess my thought or my vision on this is that we include in the RFP that inclusiveness that we've talked about, about organizations and other entities. And then when it comes back, when we get the proposal back, at that point in time, we can mine that input or cooperation from those other parties and either include or exclude them. So it's almost an à la carte proposal is what I would envision.
Yep, I agree.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Steve. We'll move then to, Scott, are you here to speak to that item or the next agenda item?
Fireworks?
Okay, so.
You're going to bake fireworks tonight?
It's the only type of fireworks you want to talk about at the council meeting.
So agenda item number 12 is consider the renewal agreement with J&amp;M Displays Incorporated for the Fourth of July fireworks. With us tonight is Scott Bandermilen, Community Services Director. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is threefold, and as you can tell by the documentation that we provided for you. First and foremost, we do have an existing agreement for fireworks for this summer with J&amp;M Displays, who recently bought out Pyrotechnic Display, who we've worked with for a number of years. Historically, this city has had the luxury of entering into a multi-year agreement for fireworks so that we could lock in a set price for all three years. As you notice in the letter from J&amp;M Displays that they sent us in January, fireworks costs for this year were going to go up as much as 20%. So we spent some time on the phone with J&amp;M Displays discussing our existing agreement, confirming that they would honor the existing agreement at the price that we agreed to three years ago back in 2019. They did agree to do that. Moving forward, without an agreement for next year or any further years, they have presented two options to us. One option is to sign a one-year agreement that is reflective of that 20% increase, which would be just a little bit over $14,000, and that would be for 2023. They do have also an option on the table, what they refer to as a MIA, a multi-year agreement, for '23, '24, and '25. But the disadvantage, in our opinion, to renewing a three-year agreement with them is there's no set price. That price could change from year to year. It could be 20%, it could be 30%. Essentially, they could write in what our cost would be for those three years. So essentially, what we wanted to bring forth to you today is, would you prefer to go with a one-year agreement for that $14,000-plus price tag? Or secure the vendor for three years and allow them to write in the price? I did also reach out to two additional companies to get rate comparisons. One company indicated to us that they would not provide an estimate because they're, we were out of their range area, coverage area. And then Hollywood Pyrotechnics provided a quote, as you can see in your information. And essentially, that comes down to they charge $1,000 per minute for a display, and their minimum is 15 minutes. Our current display is at 20 minutes for the $11,800 fee that we will pay this year. So that's what we've done with J&amp;M Displays. So I'd welcome any questions that you may have.
Your recommendation is to have the one-year agreement for 2023?
I think, I think that's the safest route to go at this point, not knowing what the prices would be for '24 and '25.
Input from the council?
Just a question, Scott. Some of these are, these costs are offset by donations. Is that correct?
Correct.
So a couple thousand dollars of the donations?
Yeah, I'd say that's a fair estimate.
Good.
Craig?
I mean, I think that, I think that understanding all the other issues that are going on and kind of knowing where a lot of this comes from and some of their limitations on supply and these going. I mean, I think it's a pretty reasonable offer for right now. And I think let's, let's see that they continue to put the show on, that they're picking up from the previous operator. They did a great job. I think Marshall's always had a pretty outstanding fireworks show. And I'd like to see us just go with your proposal to do, you know, do the 2023, and let's see where it is.
I think the other proposal, their option for 2022 wasn't an option because they don't have an operator.
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Steve?
I would agree. I think, you know, the future is really, none of us know what's going to go on with the supply chain. And most of these things are coming from China as far as the fireworks and the pyrotechnics. So supply chain, things going on in the world right now, who knows? So I think a one-year thing is probably the best thing, otherwise we might lock ourselves into, I mean, it's a gamble. We might get a good deal. We might, like Scott says, go up 20, 30, 40, 50% or more. Who knows? So the only thing that I would say is if we get that MIA, that multi-year, and have a not-to-exceed clause in there, if they'd be willing to do it. But I don't know if they'd be willing to do that.
We did propose that, and they were not interested in having that discussion.
Yeah. I think that's a pretty, that's a pretty slippery chance we take on giving an open account. Because if we sign a three-year agreement, we basically have a contract, and whatever they say we pay, we pay.
Right.
And yeah, I'm just not, I'm not willing to do that.
No.
The attorney's shaking his head no.
Yeah.
I don't have to say anything. You guys have, you got my thoughts yet. Let's not do that.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't even do that with my own money.
With that input, I'd entertain a motion to enter into the one-year agreement with J&amp;M.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes.
Thanks, Scott.
Move then to agenda item number 14, consider the resolution authorizing the execution of the MinDOT Aeronautics Grant Agreement for the federal airport expenses reimbursement under the American Rescue Plan Act. Jason?
Mr. Mayor, you might have skipped item 13.
Okay, we'll do 13 then. So 13 is also from the airport. It's a zoning update. We have a resolution to consider that would authorize the execution of the MinDOT grant agreement. Jason, also.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the city did receive notification from MinDOT Aeronautics that we received a grant for updating our airport zoning ordinance. You're aware of this because on January 11th, we came to council and had, got council authorization to execute an agreement with TKDA to help us do this work. We've just been kind of waiting for MinDOT to get this grant agreement out. It's been a little slow, but it is finally here. So kind of a, just a part of the process where we need to execute this grant agreement to actually access the 70% state participation. So staff would recommend that we approve this grant agreement and we get to work with TKDA.
And this also was in front of the Airport Commission, and they obviously recommended to the council to approve.
Any questions? Now, is there a motion?
So, second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Now, we'll move to agenda item number 14. This is the resolution, which would require four votes, for the MinDOT Aeronautics Grant Agreement using the ARPA funds.
Thank you, Mayor. So back in June of 2021, actually, we were made aware that we'd be receiving this grant through the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act. It's a $59,000 grant. And once again, it's just taken MinDOT Aeronautics quite some time to get an agency agreement over. Not exactly sure why it took this long, what was going on on their end for sure, but it doesn't really matter. We do have a plan for these funds to just offset operational expenses. They can be used to offset operational expenses. That's what we've done with the other COVID funds that have been delivered to Marshall's Airport. We've just used them to offset operations. We did do the re-roofing on the AD building, and part of that is having these extra funds to be able to do that because that was an unbudgeted expense. But we would propose to do the same thing. You know, Carla Drown in the finance office helps us out, and she submits the necessary paperwork for us to do that. So we would recommend to pass this agreement. It's an agency agreement between the city and MinDOT, which authorizes MinDOT to channel funds to us on behalf of the FAA.
Thank you, Jason. Comments from the Airport Commission?
Yeah, again, we recommend to the council to approve.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
So move. Second.
By Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number 15, consider the resolution providing for the issuance and sale of the city's general obligation bonds and the general obligation refunding bonds. I'll call on our Director of Administrative Services to present this item. EJ Molberg also would note that if there is a motion, you know, the potential action would be that the motion would need to be unanimous of those here, all four votes. An alternative motion, if there is any questions, would be the table. EJ?
Thank you. Good evening. Also, I just wanted to point out that Terry Heaton from Baker Tilly is on Zoom. So if there are questions that I can't answer, she will be providing backup. So I just wanted to kind of look at these in the three different pieces, or what I consider to be three different pieces. There's two different bond issuances. 2021, or 2022A, excuse me, is for $2,920,000. Includes three of the different portions were discussed at the last council meeting, two weeks ago, relating to the airport, the abatement, and the street reconstruction. The improvement portion has also come forward. My understanding was that actually contracts have been let for the Helber Road and the South First Street projects already. So this is our funding mechanism for those pieces. The second one that came forward earlier this month was the 2022B issuance for the refunding bonds. That is an amount of $1,370,000. Would be to refund future maturities. They both happen to be on 2011 issuances, 11A and 11B. It'd be to refund those maturities that would otherwise mature in 2023 to 2027, as those bonds are callable as of July 1st. The idea to do it would be to have some interest cost savings over what we're scheduled to pay over that time period. I just wanted to mention the third piece that I'm calling as a piece, it's not an issuance, but something that Baker Tilly suggested we put in was, in the resolution wording is establishing a pricing committee, then setting parameters for how that would work. The reason to do that is that as the Federal Reserve is looking at interest rates and raising rates throughout the year, we could get into a crunch where our issuance date could come close to the Fed raising interest rates. So there could be some fluctuation, which may settle down in a matter of days and maybe a couple of weeks before rates are favorable. So the parameters would be set so that for the 2022A, as it's written in the resolution, would be, 2022A would be if the rate is less than 4%, the true interest cost. Right now, in the materials in your packet tonight, you'll see that the true interest cost is about 2.29%. As, that they're projecting, so we've got some room there. 2022B issuance, we'd want to see a net savings of at least $20,000, or we wouldn't be necessarily worthwhile to go through that issuance. So that's what that's set. And when we look through the packet, you'll see that I believe the current projected savings are in, is close to $37,000, almost $38,000. So if we can just, can you scroll a page, Kyle, for me? On this kind of lays out the general timeline, so where we're here tonight on March 22nd is to set the sale date and terms. There'd be a rating conference. The idea would be to come back to council on April 26th. Hopefully, that will have, competitive bids have been received, and we can do the award that night. Alternatively, if, if, again, if there's an interest rate situation as proposed, or we don't propose that, but if it would occur and the resolution goes through, we'd have the option for the pricing committee, which is set to be the mayor, the city administrator, and myself. Would you be authorizing us ultimately to accept the bids and do an award, and then come back to you with the information after the fact? Just so it wouldn't necessarily work out that, to necessarily hit a council meeting to make that decision if the rates were favorable in that period. But the timeline otherwise would be there, so then if everything worked out and bonds were actually sold on April 26th, we're looking at getting the proceeds around May 26th, and then again on July 1st, the refunding bonds would be redeemed. As part of the refunding, I should mention that there is a portion of the 2011A bond issuance that was related to tax increment that we'd actually be paying in cash now because that one was scheduled to mature anyway next year. So we already have the cash. It doesn't make sense to refund or refinance that when we've already collected on those monies. So if you, Kyle, if you can jump ahead to like page 145 of the packet. Just wanted to show you this. It's very tight on the screen there, but this is the 2022A proposal. So you can see the total debt service there, what it would mean for the different pieces. And then if you go, actually, let's go back one page, I'm sorry. Go to 144. This is where they're broken out by the different portions there for the improvement, the airport, the abatement, and the street reconstruction plan for those portions. And then again, if you go, scroll down, now back to 145, and then scroll down, there's a line for true interest cost there, and that's where it's showing the 2.2892515%. So is what it's currently projected. It is just a projection at this point. Obviously, we'll know more in a month. And then if you could jump to 153 for me. This is the 2022B issuance. Again, so that third column in would be the tax increment piece that we would propose just funding out of the monies we already have collected for that. So that one could get reached, or paid that way as opposed to doing that. Then there's a net present value benefit line, just coming up on the bottom of the screen there, that shows there that the total savings, projected savings at this point, if you go one up from where you're at, Kyle, $37,912.60 is the current projected. And it's just projected as of today. Interest rates, as we know, are changing with how that works. That's what that piece is. And then if we can jump way ahead to 163. This is part of the resolution. I just wanted to point out again that this is the pricing committee structure. And again, it's something that our municipal advisor, Baker Tilly, is suggesting to, I believe, Terry mentioned that they're proposing it to all of their current government clients just because of the volatility with interest rates this year, with possible increases. And this is where it does lay out also the parameters. Again, I mentioned that for the 2022A there, in number one, that you'd be authorizing the committee to, as long as the true interest cost doesn't exceed 4%. For the 2022B, we want the savings of at least $20,000. And then if we go to the next page, under the C there at the top, you're authorizing this, that if this resolution is approved today, we'd have the authority for no later than 90 days, which actually works out to be June 20th. We hope it, we hope it's settled by April 26th. We're just trying to build in a little bit of flexibility so that we don't get caught in a situation where we're doing something unfavorable. Any questions?
Thank, thank you, EJ. Questions?
Mr. Mayor and EJ, what, if we table this, what does that do to the timeline? My worry, I'll just be honest and transparent. My worry is the volatility of the market, the interest rates change. I mean, I feel like, on the one hand, we should wait for our other members to be here. On the other hand, interest rates are going to go. And if we wait two weeks, that pushes everything potentially two weeks minimum, if not a month more.
I believe our next meeting is actually three weeks away.
Right, yes.
Actually, so we're waiting three more weeks, which would potentially add more volatility.
Yeah.
Like I said, if there are specific concerns and you'd like to wait, you guys are welcome. A lot of these pieces have come forward before. The only piece that's really new to the council tonight is the refunding piece, which just came up earlier this month.
Right.
But we wouldn't issue that, or we wouldn't recommend that to be accepted unless there is that savings anyway.
Right. Other input or questions?
I would move to approve with the formation of the, and the allowance of the committee, the pricing committee.
I'll second that motion. Motion for the- Motion for the resolution by Steve, seconded by Craig. Now discussion on that motion. Terry Heaton, I don't want to exclude you from the discussion. Do you have anything you wanted to add? Or Michaela?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I think E.J. has provided all the significant and material items. The only thing I would add is, you know, that the pricing committee is the mayor, the city administrator, and the director of administrative services. And in lieu of, you know, if we're going to shoot for the date of the sale, but what we would provide to them is the same bid tabulation that we bring forward usually to the city council with the lowest bid being recommended. And so it'll look and feel a lot like that. And they would actually award the bonds in lieu of the council if we had to go on that route. And then we prepare, and this becomes standard operating procedure when there's volatile markets, then we would prepare a summary of the sale and provide that to staff to provide to all of you so you get a summary of that action.
Thank you, Terry. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Michaela, and thank you, E.J.
Yep, thank you.
We'll move then to Agenda I of number 16. This is the request for interim use permit for a storage container in the B3 Business District, the location 1511 East College Drive, this location of the Comfort Inn. This was considered by the Planning Commission, which recommended its approval. Ilya Gutman, I'll call on you to present.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a request by Quality Inn to allow an interim use permit for having a container on their property. About a year ago, the council approved the ordinance change. It now allows businesses in the general business district to keep or have their containers with certain conditions as an interim use permit. It is interim use permit because it allows a conditional limiting in time, because conditional use permit doesn't allow that thing. So as you can see, one of the conditions is limitation to in time until the owner changes. And it was a wish of the council at that time to have that condition always included. The rest of the conditions are typical, and also you can see that one of the conditions is just instead of rewriting all the conditions from the ordinance, it just attaches the ordinance and says that they have to comply with the ordinance specific to this day. So for example, if ordinance changes later on, they will not be bound by that. They will still be bound by the current ordinance. So recommendations to approve, and the planning commission, as the mayor said, recommended approval.
Thank you, Ilya. Questions? Move approval.
Second.
Craig, seconded by Russ to approve the conditional use permit for the storage container. Discussion on that motion? A bit later in my individual items, I'll talk a little bit about some of the general discussion on this at the Planning Commission, but that discussion was not specific to this request. Any other discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 17. This is a request for a conditional use permit for mini storage in a B3 general business district requested by Menards Incorporated, location 1211 Clarice Avenue. Once again, this was considered by the Planning Commission, reviewed, and they recommended its approval in addition to the presentation by Ilya. I would note that the representative of the owner is also in attendance this evening. Ilya?
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a request by Menards to have a mini storage across from Walmart on Clarice, right along the pond. You can see that thing. I think there is also a layout, the proposed layout, which is included in your packet. This is a general business district, and all mini storages are conditional use in that general business district, so that's why the request is in front of you. The conditions are trying to minimize any impacts on the surrounding area, if any. So for example, it will be, all the drives will be paved. It will be basically surrounded either by the units or by the fence. And landscaping ordinance, they will have to comply. They will have to plant some trees and have some grass there. I included the specific number of units as they indicated on their request so that, to make sure that this conditional use permit applies only to the way it is presented to the council right now, and that's not, they cannot increase enough of units later on. If they do want to do it, they will have to have a new conditional use permit.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Ilya?
Ilya, just a question. You made reference, just a clarification. All areas paved, so in between the units, they all have to be paved?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And this was their plan, actually, to begin with.
Any other questions?
And we leave the pavement can either be by tuminus or concrete. It's their call on that?
Correct, because in general, all the driveways can be either asphalt or concrete.
Now, in the, just in the apron part, the right-of-way onto our street, that's required concrete, as in all the other driveway requirements that we put in. As soon as they're out of the right-of-way, then they're into whatever.
Yes, but I think that's a standard practice.
Sure. Okay, very good.
Any other questions or input? Now the representative, did you want to say anything this evening, or?
If you want me to, otherwise I can just sit back and relax. Whatever.
Well, if there is any specific questions, otherwise you have the request before you.
I move approval.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion?
One question. I have a fence, and I've got an RV unit out there.
I'll have you come forward.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, are people going to be able to get in there 24/7 if they have to?
Did you even say my name or you didn't take the record?
Yes, you do. Yes.
Nick Brenner with Menards, 5101 Menard Drive, Oakley, Wisconsin. Yeah, if, could you go back to the site plan, maybe help explain kind of the operational perspective here? So you can see the access off the road there. There's a little rectangle, if you zoom in on it. That's the gate. It's an overhead-like garage gate. So anyone that has a unit inside there, whether it's parking stall or a enclosed unit, will have a code. So they'll go up to the keypad, open the code, and be able to get in. So yeah, you're able to get in that 24/7, and it is fully secured. So only people that are renting at that time are able to gain access to that facility.
Good, thank you.
And you also have other, other locations in the Menards family that have the same development?
Yes, yes. We have probably about seven or eight operational today. We are looking to do about another 20 or 30 this year. So it is something that is becoming part of the Menard framework.
Any other questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
So any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 18, Consider the Levy and Flood Control Property Signage Exhibits and the Quote. Jason, and I note that this was considered by the Public Improvement and Transportation Committee. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're aware as a council so far here that we did hire Butel-Mozin recently to provide some surveying services along the flood control project. That's our levees and our diversion channel. We promised we'd follow back up with some signage information once we got that, because what we had talked about was that Butel-Mozin would do some survey. They'd set some property pins and some lathe along property lines at specific locations, and city staff would follow up and install posts with small little signs that indicate that it's our property and what it is. So you see in the council packet, there's some small signs, four by six inches in size, so like a postcard type of sign, that would be mounted on three to four-foot-tall posts and installed at specific locations that identifies the levy property or the flood control property. So that's what you see in front of you. We just wanted some consideration from council before we went ahead and started installing these. Total cost would be just shy of $2,000, and we've got that quote included in the packet as well. So looking for concurrence from our council that we should go ahead and order these signs and follow up by installing them.
I'd turn to the Public Improvement Committee. Any input?
We, one consideration was is to possibly add a sticker to the back. Committee member Labatt brought that up to, just to, if the people in the area have a question that we, they know which number to call it, City Hall, if they have any issues or questions about what does this mean. And, you know, Jason indicated that that wouldn't be a problem, that we could sticker the back of the signs.
Any other input or questions?
We did recommend approval unanimously.
I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, my question would be, where are these signs going to go? And there's 120 of them we're looking at, so what do we need a sign for? It reminds me of that song, "Signs, signs, everywhere there's a sign." I mean, if they're in a flood control plane and it's on my property, shouldn't I know that as a property owner?
Yeah.
And I know that there's been encroachment into it.
Yes.
But do we need signs to remind people, or do we get better off with just a letter saying, "Move your crap off our property"?
So, no, it's a great question and a good point. And these are things that we've brought up to different council committees, too, and talked in great detail about, because it is important. Like you mentioned, people are going to look out and see a sign in their yard that was not there before. A lot of people that live up against a flood control property do a considerable amount of maintenance for us. They mow, they do different things. They do a nice job of generally taking care of the property, and we're appreciative of that. But properties change hands all the time, and I think it's a continual effort of chasing things after the fact when you don't have delineation there. If you put these signs up and you clearly delineate where the property is, there's no question, and you won't have to, after the fact, have somebody move a structure, for example, which is kind of onerous, and it creates a lot of bad blood. We have some history with that, with tree removal along the property where they were planted too close to levees and things like that. That undermines the entire integrity of the system, right? And that doesn't meet standards, and that puts us in a bad position. And then folks are usually pretty upset when we come and take care of things after the fact.
Do we, do we mow the, our property?
We mow our property where others are not. I think that a lot of people, specifically in the residential neighborhoods that abut our property, have done a very good job of just mowing it when they mow their grass. And like I said, we're appreciative of that because they mow at a greater frequency than we ever would be able to, I think. But we mow in other locations where we don't have property owners right up against the flood control property. We're not going to, we're trying, we're going to try very hard to not sign pollute their backyards, but where the property lines change and move, we kind of feel like we need to designate where that is. And on some properties, it would be nice if, there may be one on every other property line, for example. So on your property, you've got one, not two, but you can clearly see the line.
Was there any discussion of just putting these in as the properties change ownership?
We did not discuss that specifically, that I recall, and somebody can correct me if they remember that being a part of the conversation.
That seems like it would be the easier way to introduce it without so much hate and discontent of all the signs. I'm owning now, I get the letter, and if I've got stuff encroaching the levy, I get my stuff, I get the letter. If I sell, then the sign goes up, and that's part of the deal.
And Steve, I think, and Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, part of our discussion was that if the city had to go into this area and do something, that if a landlord or the owner had a garden there, you know, we could legally tear up that garden and not have to replace it.
Right.
So, I mean, it's just an awareness situation. And again, we're talking, I think Westwood Acres is a prime example, that there are some people that were not only trees, but wood piles and sheds and everything else. So if we have to go in there and we politely ask them to move the shed, otherwise we can move it and we don't have to replace it. Correct?
Yes, correct. It's on our property. I guess I worry, and our attorney can chime in if he desires, but I worry about leaving things like that for too long and adverse possession and things of that nature, because once you've let somebody take over your property, it may become their property, and that we can't allow that to happen. The other piece for you to understand, too, councilmen, meisters, we did send notices to everybody to let them know that there'd be a surveyor walking around in their backyard and why. And I'm pretty sure the notice indicated we'd be looking into placing signs, too, out of to check on that. But we did fairly recently, after council moved to hire Butel-Mozin, we did send out notices.
Did you have any response from property owners?
I don't believe so. I'd have to check with Lonore and Jesse on that.
So by sending out the notices, does that validate the ownership? Because when you say, and maybe this is a question for Dennis, but if you say you'd love somebody to be on the property, okay, I sent you a letter as a property owner. We own this property. You have a shed on your property. If we need to do something, it's our property, we get to do what we want. Does that mitigate the adjudication of our property to the person who's building the stuff on it?
That would help, but as a technical matter, you cannot adversely possess property against government. Government cannot lose property by adverse possession. So I know that's kind of the opposite of what you said, Jason, but that's.
No, thank you.
But the, one of the things, go ahead now.
I was going to say, I think it is nice to delineate that, the line between private and public ownership, and it seemed to be supportive amongst the group.
And part of this is, is it's kind of to be consistent with it. And I think, you know, it's to maintain some of the areas that we need to control aren't technically in city limits, but we still are responsible for the levy, and it's still our right-of-way as part of the flood control project. There are a few properties where the boundary doesn't make sense to a setback from the inside top of the dyke or the, or the non-wet side of the toe of the dyke. There's some irregularities there, and you can even see it by neighbors establishing property line by lining up with what the other neighbor does. So there's a few pieces there that the lines are irregular, and time fades memory. And, you know, so just as a good neighbor policy, it's kind of like good fences make good neighbors. Good delineation, good survey markers, and some type of a landmark that says this is a survey marker. Thank you for maintaining it. You're more than welcome to use it and enjoy it and all the rest of that. But however, when we need to service it, we're going to come in and service it. And that's kind of the garden discussion or the woodpile discussion. I don't, we didn't see anything, looking at the aerials, if you go and kind of put the property lines in on the GPS overhead. People are using it reasonably. I think for the most part, there may be a misunderstanding of who's responsible for it. But I, at first, I'm thinking, do we have to do this? And then as I kind of thought about what property line disputes look like, and even in neighborhoods, we really need to do this. If we're going to survey, we need to mark it, because they're going to be mad just with the fact that the survey markers may, the flags may show something different than what they assumed, and then to not have that repeat, I think we need to sign it.
If I may also just add in, as someone who traffics in property line disputes through our office, you know, most people don't know where their property lines are.
Right.
I'll be blunt. And especially along the flood control property, it turns, it jives, it curves.
Very regular.
Nobody knows where that is.
How often does it get surveyed? Because the river changes constantly.
Well, the limits are substantially far away from the river typically, so that wouldn't really impact where our property is. But we don't, we haven't surveyed it since we took ownership. So this is an opportunity for us. We, there's a couple pieces with Butel-Mozin. One is get a licensed land surveyor out there, so if anybody does dispute it, we, it's not just our guys who aren't licensed, it's the licensed land surveyor put this in. You know, this is where it is. And then the second piece is, we're asking him to clearly and concisely put everything into one place for us, so we don't have to go try to find documents and give it to us in an AutoCAD file. We have everything on coordinates. We can very clearly go out and just reestablish as we need to. It's a really good project. I know that putting the signs might ruffle some feathers, but I personally think it's really important.
So the signs, just to clarify, the signage would go on the south side of the river, south side of the levy. It does not include a 1963 dyke?
You know, actually, I believe we did identify the 1963 property as well. Yeah, everything through Marshall and around Marshall that is flood control property, we're going to put some sort of markers up at a good distance. You know, when you get out into the 1963 area, you're butt up against a farm field, there'll be good space between those signs. But we did feel it was important to establish that property everywhere.
Any other input? If not, you have the recommendation from staff in the committee. If not, you have the recommendation from staff in the committee, I would entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, there is a motion.
We've already got a motion.
Oh, we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And a motion passes. Agenda I have number 19, consider the resolution of the support for the Raze grant application for MINDOT for the 2025 College Drive Reconstruction Project. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we as staff kind of rushed this one onto the agenda. MINDOT approached us fairly late with this one, but they are trying to get a grant application in for our 2025 College Drive Reconstruction Project. Uh, the, the Raze grants, a federal grant, um, would help, really help MINDOT, that's what we're doing here, is to help them find additional funds for projects. That's, that's good for all of us if our district of MINDOT can find these funds. So we, I believe we really want to help support them. The resolution that you have essentially says that the city's aware of the project, the city's got this identified in our, our capital improvement plan, we support the project, and we want that to get done. So I do believe MINDOT will be reaching out to numerous other entities throughout the community for different letters of support and, and different things like that. This would be the city council's ability to, to chip in. We'd recommend to approve that resolution.
And MINDOT, in just recently, is also, looks like they're going to agree or going to include all the way into the, uh, Bruce Street intersection, correct, in this project?
That's correct, and they still haven't gotten a final estimate and amendment brought forward yet, but they are working on it. Jesse Vlomick, our project manager, actually just reached out today for some city cost estimates for that work to include into his. That is still coming forward, and I expect that he will be visiting us fairly soon.
Good. Okay, very good. Questions? If not, is there a motion on this resolution?
I move that we consider a resolution of support for the Raze grant application for MINDOT's 2025 College Drive Reconstruction Project.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ross, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Okay, we'll move then to Agenda I have number 20, Commission Board Liaison Report. Actually, the only one I'm going to report on this evening is Planning Commission. Um, you know, we had the two actions, or, uh, that came before the Planning Commission, and they also had the update on the comprehensive plan. There, um, one of the items that was on the agenda this evening was the storage container, and there was a couple individuals that were at the Planning Commission to discuss the storage containers, and it probably was as a result of the notifications that had gone out. So there was a, you know, the understandable questions like, um, you know, why and why not this business, and why is, why are we acting on one, and what is required in terms of fencing or, um, or paint or coloring? And, um, in terms of the short-term need because of supply chain issues and need to overorder some things, so they have an inventory. All the discussions that I know this council and the committees have heard also before, prior to introducing that ordinance, so that was Planning Commission. Craig?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Airport Commission, we met, and, and I think that was prior to the previous council meeting, but we acted on those items tonight. The Merritt Center Board met, I was not able to attend, but I do have a report from, from, uh, our coordinator, Jasmine, on that. And, uh, going back into December, uh, the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension held a force unit training for 42 local law enforcement professionals on December 3rd. January, February, and March, the National Fire Academy held a three-part leadership series for 19 firefighters. And this was pretty significant, because I think this is an effort that the NFA is pushing out, and, and I believe that, um, this was the first one hosted, and it's pretty popular. So I think that's something that I anticipate that they're going to continue and, and absolutely be repeating at Merritt. February 16th through the 18th, uh, State Patrol, uh, hosted a, uh, driving course, uh, State Patrol and Marshall PD, they had 14 officers attended that training. Merritt has received a $2,000 seminar and conference grant from MDFTE, which, I'm not sure exactly what that is, but it brought in a nationally known instructor from the fire department, and I think this is part of that State Fire Training Board. And they brought instructors in from Texas, and, uh, it's, they can talk brilliant in the basics training, March 5th through the 6th, uh, with 39 firefighters. And I believe that's TEGS that puts that on, that's the, kind of the Texas, uh, college program down there. TEGS does an amazing job of, they're, they're actually an international, uh, gold standard for training. So getting those trainers in Marshall at Merritt and having them build a trust and an interest in that campus is also huge. So Jasmine's done a great job with, with all of that stuff. Um, there's an FTO course scheduled for April 4th through the 6th, uh, field training officers to develop trainers for, um, hands-on, uh, kind of, uh, train while you, while you run for, uh, bringing new law enforcement in. And there'll be 29 officers attending that, so that's really good building the FTOs. And then there's a criminal interdiction drug search training for law enforcement coming up April 7th and 8th with 34 officers scheduled to attend. Couple side notes, Southwest Healthcare Preparedness Coalition donated $4,000 to install video conferencing equipment in Classroom A, so that builds out another classroom available to schedule in for training. And then we have a bonding bill in the current legislative session, and that bill would be to complete the gun ranges at the track and for a live burn structure. And we've been wanting a live burn structure out there since the Merritt Center's inception was to do live fire burning. That's becoming more and more critical now with, um, the firefighters' inability to actually train with a lot of the, uh, products that they can use with the A triple F, uh, fire suppression chemicals, having the, uh, legacy compounds in them that are impacting groundwater. So having live burn training for fire departments to use new and innovative techniques that are easier on the environment and safer for the firefighters is critical. So, um, both of those, uh, that, that, uh, bonding package has passed, both, uh, this House and Senate, uh, Budget Bill or Capital Investment Committee, so, or they pushed it forward. So I think that's a really good mark for us. And again, the Merritt has been getting really good support from both of our, uh, representative and our senators, so we really appreciate their help. But that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Steve?
Cable Commission did not meet, Community Services Advisory Board did not meet, EDA actually did not meet because we didn't have a quorum, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Library Board did meet, uh, we discussed or updated some policies, and one policy that they are requesting that maybe council take a look at, or at least the mayor and administrator, is the, um, contract agreement with the county. Because in that policy states that their budget has to be presented to the Library Board by June and all that other type of thing. So we thought, we did not approve that particular policy unless they don't want to make any changes to the contract, the county and the city, so. Year-to-date visits are, it was a positive thing. At 2021, we had 4731, and 2022 is 8505, so, because, you know, 2021 was half COVID and everything else, so the visits are coming back. They did put out a bunch of library love notes, which is, were kind of interesting to read. On a negative issue, uh, they are having issues with the family restroom in the library, and due to those issues taking place, that they have had to place a lock on the door, and then the person, if somebody wants to use it, that family restroom, they have to go to the front, or front counter and get a key to go in. So it's unfortunate situation that, uh, that they were experiencing it with some younger adults that shouldn't have been doing the things they were doing. So that's it for the library. CVB met. One thing I thought was kind of interesting, uh, they're looking maybe at some point in time, because they are doing better with, uh, you know, with hotels and things like that, looking to maybe reinvest some dollars to help improve Marshalls, parks, hotels, restaurants, and so I'm safe for sure. There's no dollar amount mentioned, but they said, hey, well, let's, let's discuss with the city, and maybe there's something that CVB can, can help reinvest in part of the thing, so. Radio Home Show is this weekend, so I encourage you to go out there. That's, that was, uh, been postponed for the last couple of years, so that's it. The Youth Sports and Activity Expo, that'll be held April 2nd from 9:00 to 1:00, and as of the date of March 10th, they had 24 vendors, but I think they even have more to look at that. Uh, we talked about the Red Bear and our, our contracts this ending. Newsletter went out. Uh, one of the things they, they have, it's called a Google DMO program, is off to a great start, and working with community grab hold of their Google account is a little bit that I know about it. Kyle, maybe you know a lot more than I do, but if you type in Marachis, for example, uh, they want to work with the local businesses, so if you type in that, it comes up first, it comes up on the top. So I thought that was kind of a neat idea, that they want to start working with the chamber and working with the local businesses, and helping our local businesses with their Google accounts. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move then to, uh, council member individual items. Russ?
I have nothing, thank you.
Craig?
Just real quick, um, I want to thank our Public Works Engineering Department. We've talked, uh, on and off about some fencing issues at a couple of our bridge crossings in town over the, over the river, main channel, and, um, some things came up just within the last couple of days, and by the end of the PINT meeting today between the Engineering Department and our, uh, city administrator, um, there's a real good solution investigation path forward, and I just really want to say that I really appreciate, um, how open, available, and, and positively reactive they are, so they're really in support of the community and, and good efforts. So I just want to put a thank you. They don't get thanked enough around here, most of our department heads, we just chew them out when we don't like what we see, so I really appreciate that.
Very good. Steve?
The only thing that I would like to bring up is, is sidewalk issues again. You know, we have, we have this ordinance that we put new sidewalks in, but then the homeowner or the property owner is responsible for it. As I'm starting to run again, as the, as the weather's getting better, man, they're in disrepair. They just stink. There's cracks, there's heaves, it's tripping hazard. We've got to make it easier for people, and if, again, I think it's just something that we should talk about is putting sidewalks under general bonding, that way we take care of the maintenance, give people who want to take care of it a break. I have a, a constituent who called me who's a single person, got sick, was, had COVID for a while, was in home, couldn't do it when the snow came. What's the penalty there, you know? Is there any, is there any, um, forgiveness because she's too sick to get out and shovel, and she normally does it? Uh, in fact, shovels all of her neighbors because they won't. She couldn't do it, does she get the fine? You know, those are great questions, and if we just put it on the general bonding issue and there's a sidewalk we're taking care of as a city because it benefits everybody and everybody pays for it, then it seems like it takes care of it, you know? There's, uh, dog waste on certain sidewalks, it's a repetitive issue, so people need to be responsible for that, but I think we need to look at that, so.
The other thing we do have in place is that cost share program. Jason, you want to explain that?
That's underutilized as per Jason's saying.
That's a great point, it has not been utilized.
It's completely underutilized, and it's still a cost share. And if you don't have a lot of money, especially with everything going on, you don't plan for it, it, we make you have it, we make you have concrete. You know, if I'm paying for something, I should have the say of what I'm putting in and not have to do the concrete, but, you know, if the city is maintaining it and running it, then I'm paying for it in taxes, well then so be it. You know, it just seems it's easier for that thing to be a, a tax-funded thing from my standpoint.
In the short term, we can try to work on advertising the sidewalk participation policy a little more through city social media, those types of things. It, it does pay, I think we're at $2.50 per square foot of sidewalk replaced, um, up to $750 per residential parcel.
Right, which is nothing when you look at the, if I've got six blocks of, six sections to pay for because they're all heaved and cracked.
It probably pays for half or a little more than half, and if you do it yourself, it probably covers all your costs. But it's a, it is a participation, and there is, of course, that, it is a two-way street there right now, you're right.
Right.
Anything else?
That's it.
Uh, the only thing that I would mention, I think I've talked about this before, last, late last year, a number of us formed the Southwest Minnesota Council of Mayors, and one of the, um, proposals that we're advancing is a tuition forgiveness for technical education for targeted occupations that we need in southwest Minnesota, uh, modeled after a program in a neighboring state where, um, the tuition is forgiven, uh, in exchange for that participant staying in that occupation in the region for three years. So that has advanced it, um, in the legislature, it was introduced today, uh, Senate File 4153. The sponsor in the Senate is Senator Bill Weber, and, um, Senator Ham, or Representative Hamilton, um, will propose us to introduce it yet this week in the House. So we, um, it's kind of late in the legislative season, there is a committee deadline for hearings, that is Friday in the Senate, so there'll need to be a hearing that will be scheduled on Friday, and we'll participate in that. I'd also note that, um, Friday is the annual meeting of the Highway 23 Coalition, which of course we're, have an interest in here, and I serve on their board. With that, um, we'll move along then to the remaining items here, information items as well as the upcoming meetings, any comments on those?
Were you going to do staff reports or not?
Oh, staff reports, yes. I jumped, jumped way ahead. So.
Yeah, thanks.
Staff reports, um, not that, not that this is not an important agenda item, because it is, so.
It's quiet on this end because Jim is gone.
So Sharon, city administrator?
Just real briefly, Mr. Mayor and council members, the mayor did present to the House Property Tax Division on, uh, March 9th, and it was very well received. Marshall and the mayor kept it very brief, I think the committee members appreciated that, and we are waiting to hear on the Senate side when that will happen. I believe we're told prior to the end of March, so we'll, uh, keep you updated. As a follow-up to our comprehensive plan update, earlier this year, there was a comment, uh, by Councilmember De Kramer about somehow, uh, maybe updating, reviewing our strategic plan, and I have since looked into a, you know, having a work session facilitator, and the mayor suggested potentially kind of tagging it on to this comprehensive, uh, plan update, which, as you can see, there's, it really is visioning and looking out into the future, and I think there's some good similarities between that and the strategic plan. So, uh, possibly we have a work session that takes into account some of the things discussed tonight and incorporating that into our strategic plan as well. We are, have scheduled union negotiation for March 29th, and I know because of the new pay plan, we, um, are going to rely on Personnel Committee for some feedback follow-up on that. I don't anticipate settlement tentative agreements on March 29th, I mean, maybe, but, uh, just kind of a heads up, we'll definitely call you and, and, uh, get some feedback before we get to that point. But a lot of work, um, by our HR Director on, uh, employee questions, some union requests for data, and, um, just really looking at over and over and over again. And, uh, I am going to meet with the Lyon County Administrator, talk a little bit about library. I know that there was a comment, um, from a commissioner that I actually talked to after State of the City about, wasn't quite sure where this one-third, two-thirds came from, and they didn't have the agreement. So we'll give them the agreement, and we will talk about just, you know, kind of the city's role and, and, um, they are their own board and they're their own organization, and I think there's just some, some misunderstanding on that, but I'm going to do that this week too. And then, uh, I know that you were all at the, uh, work session that our city assessor presented, but, you know, he mentioned that the, um, valuation notices and the tax statements are coming out, I believe, towards the end of March. And, uh, just the increase in residential valuations could, uh, you may hear feedback from, from, um, individual residents, and I know Dave's done a great job trying to communicate that, and, and, uh, if there's any organization or other outlets where they want more information on it, I know that Dave's willing to communicate that. I think that's really something he has a desire to do, especially this year because of those, those, uh, changes in valuation based on sales data. So I throw that out to the council as well, and that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sharon. Questions? If not, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick updates. Tomorrow, we have a pre-construction meeting for the Independence Pond Four Bay Expansion Project. You may remember that was awarded last year, really didn't get started last year. They'll, they'll start right away this spring. So excited about that. Maybe we were tricked by the warm weather, but we're, we're going to meet. So Thursday, we'll meet with Bolton and Mink regarding the North Third Street, Lyon Street project, kind of a kickoff meeting just to get things started. So we'll keep you in the loop as that progresses. The following week, we are meeting with landlords to discuss the rental ordinance. So Tuesday, March 29 at 5:30, it'll be a meeting where it's geared more towards the single-family homes that are rented. Wednesday, March 30 at 3:30, that's geared more for the multifamily properties, the apartment buildings. You are all invited. I know our city clerk, Kyle Box, will be posting it as a public meeting, so we won't have any issues with a quorum. So if you can make it, that'd be great. We expect a big turnout. Only other thing I would note is we did take advantage of the nice weather, got our two street sweepers out, swept up a lot of material. I think that was really important before precipitation event and it really helps to kind of clean things up. So going very well. I know the street team really appreciates that, so thank you.
Just if I could follow up on that. One of the council members who sits on the other side of Councilman Labatt, so I won't name any names, called me this morning in just absolute admiration and kind of self-team congratulating to the Equipment Committee for pushing that second sweeper concept forward. And, you know, just in the fact that everybody got out there and got all that done, he thought was great and not any downtime. The other thing I pointed out to him is that as we try to continue to meet our chloride limits to the Redwood River and other issues in the Redwood and as far as maintenance of our, our storm sewer collection system, getting that grit off now before we get, before we got this rain and precip is critical. And he was very, very proud of that this morning and I did notice it also. Nice job to the, to the Public Works Department for getting all that done. But I know Jim would have just bragged that up if he was here, so I had to do it for him. So you all make sure that he knows I did it for him.
Thank you. Anything else for Jason? If not, Dennis?
Couple of things, Mayor. Thank you. The, the Block 11 development appears to be moving forward. Lauren advised me today that the, the developer had signed the purchase agreement, which was approved at our last council meeting. So that should be coming forward for your signature, Mayor, shortly. And then, and then also there has been an additional piece of city-owned property, Lot 1, Block 1 of the Central Edition, which is out by Helena, it's right on highway, right on the airport road there. An entity called Daisy and Tulip Holdings LLC, which is the company from Gruha, D and G, that will own that property and they'll be putting up a equipment storage facility at that large lot. So, so the development continues. Thank you.
Very good, very good. Question for Dennis? If not, now we'll move along to the remaining items, the information items and the upcoming meetings. Are there any questions on either of those items? Is there anything else to come forward this evening? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Steve?
Second.
Second by Russ to adjourn discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. The motion does pass. We are adjourned.